And we appreciate everybody coming down and so we'll go ahead and start. Welcome to the Metropolitan Planning Commission August 8th meeting. First, your agenda is in front of you. The first item to do is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next is the item C, which is the approval of the July 25th, 2024 minutes. These were sent out earlier and will need a motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve? It's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next is the recognition of the council members. And I did see Councilman Horton. How are you, sir? Good to see you. Welcome if you want to speak now or come on. You have to push the... Yeah, there's... We'll help. Oh, the microphones are sensitive. Welcome.
Mic check? Okay. Hi, planning commissioners. My name is Roland Horton. I'm the District 20 Metro Council member here to speak on Agenda Item 4, which is the Rock Harbor Marina redevelopment. This proposal represents the culmination of years of deep engagement and collaboration between the development team and the community. In fact, when I first went to the Charlotte Robertson Neighborhood Association to introduce myself over two years ago, the development team was already there working with the community. Throughout this extensive process, the development team has consistently shown a commitment to listening, to understanding, and incorporating the needs and vision of our community into this plan. This deep engagement is reflected in the SP that's before you today. Among the numerous benefits that this brings to our community, there are two aspects that I would like to highlight particularly. The first is enhanced access to the Cumberland River. This proposal ensures that the residents of the immediate Charlotte Robertson Neighborhood, as well as the broader West Nashville community, and really, the entire city, will have improved access to the Cumberland River. This helps the neighborhood and the city reengage with the river and to create a space where residents can connect with the river, whether that's enjoying recreational activities, dining, or enjoying the natural scenery of the river. The Cumberland River is a key component of both the neighborhood and the city's identity, and this proposal makes it more accessible and more enjoyable for everyone. The second aspect I'd like to highlight is enhanced mixed-use amenities. This proposal thoughtfully includes thoughtfully designed mixed-use amenities that will significantly enhance the quality of life in our community. By incorporating these mixed-use amenities in close proximity within the neighborhood, residents will have the opportunity to access a bigger variety of services and businesses. This not only supports our local businesses, but also helps foster a more vibrant sense of community by creating a more vibrant, walkable neighborhood where residents can socialize and enjoy themselves right in the neighborhood without the need to get in their car and drive to a different part of the city. So this proposal is therefore an exceptional example of what can be achieved when the development team and the community work together towards a common goal. It helps provide the community and the city with enhanced access to the river while fostering a more vibrant, mixed-use and walkable community for the neighborhood. I urge you to approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just to be clear for the commissioners, I'll have to recuse myself on item number four. And if it comes up on the consent agenda, the staff will say that. And if it gets bumped off, Commissioner Henley can run the meeting. All right. Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Coopin, welcome. How are you? Good to see you.
I'm good. Thanks for having me. I'll be brief. I'm here in support of the Historic Preservation Overlay, Item 16. I just wanted to share with you all for a minute. Really excited about this one. Often, we talk about fighting for historic preservation or structures that might be torn down or taken down and fighting to keep them here. This is an opportunity where developers willingly are working with us to add preservation to an area. So we're getting some density. We're getting some development on a really important corridor. And many of you know the rock block and the importance to our city. And so really excited that this is an opportunity to protect that area for generations to come. So urge you all to support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. And I'm looking around. I don't see any other council director. Do you see any other council members? Lisa? All right. When they come in, if other council members come in, we'll recognize them. All right. So next on the agenda is Item E, which is Items For Deferral/Withdrawal. And I believe Amelia's going to take us through that. Amelia?
Yes. Items on our agenda tonight for deferral or withdrawal. Starting on page three of your agenda, item number one, 2016 SP 019007 Silo Bend SP Amendment. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number two, 2017 SP 023006 Burkett Ridge Amendment. Staff recommendation is defer indefinitely. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2022 SP 013002 Second and Van Buren Street Amendment. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number five, 2024 SP 015001 Talbets Corner. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number six, 2024 SP 016001 751 South Fifth Street. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd Planning Commission meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number eight, 2024 S 025001 Madison Station. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd meeting. Item number 10, 2024 S 083001 Harpeth Overlook. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd meeting. Item number 11, 2024 S 084001 Final Plat of the Steinbach Property. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number 13, 2024 Z 074 PR 001. Staff recommendation is defer to the September 26th meeting. Item number 15, 2024 SP 030001 1202 McGavick Pike and 1201 Keller Avenue. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number 17, 2023 S 116001 Fraser Subdivision. Staff recommendation is defer to the August 22nd meeting. And that concludes our items for deferral or withdrawal.
All right, Amelia and commissioners. Make sure we get these correct. But these are the following items for deferral/withdrawal, and they are item one, two, three, five, six, eight, 10, 11, 13, 15, and 17. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners. You've heard the items for deferral/withdrawal. Is there a motion? Motion? Second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. Leading us to Item F on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. And Amelia's going to take us through that as well.
So now I will go ahead and run through items identified on the tentative consent agenda. If you are in opposition to this item, please raise your hand. And this item will be noted on the agenda to be heard tonight. If there is opposition present, the items will be heard by the Planning Commission in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, that item will be placed on the consent agenda. As noticed to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Starting on page four of your agenda with item number four, 2024 SP 002001 Rock Harbor Marina. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item number seven, 2024 NL 002001 815 Nella Drive. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Item number nine, 2024 S 065001 Dabs and Elliott Subdivision. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page six of your agenda, item number 14, 2024 Z 081 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard.
Wait.
Yeah, 14 will be on the agenda to be heard. Item 16, 2024 HP 001001 Elliston Place. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number 18, 2024 S 113001 Woodbury Park. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 19, 2024 Z 068 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 20, 2024 Z 083 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 21, 2024 Z 084 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page eight of your agenda, item number 22, 2024 Z 085 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 23, 2024 Z 086 PR 001. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. And now I will go through and run through those again with their full captions. Okay, items on our consent agenda tonight. Starting on page four of the agenda, item number four, 2024 SP 002001 Rock Harbor Marina. This is a request to rezone from IWD and R10 to SP zoning for properties located along Basswood Avenue to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And I would like to note that Chair Atkins is recused from this item. On page five of your agenda, item number nine, 2024 S 065001 Dabs and Elliott Subdivision. This is a request for a final plat to create two lots located at 3001 Lakeshore Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including an exception to Section 3 of the subdivision regulations. On page six of your agenda, item number 16, 2024 HP 001001 Elliston Place. This is a request to apply a Historic Preservation Overlay District for properties along Elliston Place. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page seven of your agenda, item number 18, 2024 S 113001 Woodbury Park. This is a request for a final plat to create one lot located along Seneca Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exceptions to Section 3 of the subdivision regulations. Item number 19, 2024 Z 068 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from R10 to R8 for property located at 2152 Summit Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 20, 2024 Z 083 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from IR to MUGANS for property located at 1300 Fort Neckley Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 21, 2024 Z 084 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from OR20 to MULANS for property located at 360 Wallace Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 22, 2024 Z 085 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from RS5 to R6A for property located at 1228 Bessie Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 23, 2024 Z 086 PR 001. This is a request to rezone from SP to R10 for properties located along River Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. And under item H, Other Business, item number 24, New Employee Contract for Sellitseda Patterson, and item 28 to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Amelia. And so commissioners, we're voting on the consent agenda, and these are the following items. And Amelia's going to let us know if these are correct. And we have items number four, nine, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 28. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the...
Chairman, forgive me. Prior to the vote, I just got a note from staff. I just wanted to confirm that someone was here initially in opposition to 21, and I wonder if you would just ask one more time if anyone's here wanting 21 to be heard.
Absolutely. So is anyone in the audience here in opposition of item number 21? Okay. We do not see anyone in opposition to item 21. So let's read through the list one more time just to make sure. We always like to be correct. So these following items are on the consent agenda to be approved all at one time. Items number four, nine, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 28. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Good deal. Commissioners, you've heard the items to pass on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and those items are approved on the consent agenda. So that leaves us, commissioners and for the public, to consider items numbers seven, 12, and 14. And when we get to item 12, the staff is recommending that we open this item for public hearing because the last time, the applicant was not here. And so we'll get to that item on number 12. But the intent is to open the public hearing again and hear the item. Correct, Lisa? Is that correct? Okay. Good deal. So we'll let... If everybody could quickly leave the room because... All right. If the staff could help get them out of the room, and we appreciate it. It is the people's house, Stuart, but... All right. Savannah, you want to... We're on item number seven, commissioners, for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. So this is a request from the applicant located at 815 Nella Drive. They're requesting to apply a Neighborhood Landmark Overlay District to permit a STRP that's not owner-occupied, a museum, and a multimedia production studio. And this is just like a brief on the Neighborhood Landmark District and the intention of it. And the purpose of this district is to help to preserve the features that are important and to maintain enhanced neighborhood character by allowing for the adaptive reuse of the existing structure. Just a little background on a Neighborhood Landmark District. And case history, you may be familiar with this as we heard it at our last meeting on July 25th, 2024 PC meeting. After a public hearing was held and due to a desire by the commission for additional clarification on the proposed uses and for consideration of additional conditions, it was deferred. So staff recommends an approval with conditions. This site is located along Nella Drive, west of Green Acres Drive. It is one parcel, approximately 0.61 acres, with an existing single-story residential structure. The surrounding land uses is primary residential, and the surrounding zoning is R20 with RS20 to the north of the subject site. This property is located within the Pleasant Hill neighborhood and within a Historic Landmark Overlay District. The subject site was approved for a Historic Landmark Overlay by the Metro Council in 2023 due to its significance as Patsy Klein's 1961 Ranch House Dream Home. The subject site is within the policy of the T3 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance. And the proposed Neighborhood Landmark Plan is included on this slide. The plan is more regulatory in nature and is intended to establish the uses and standards of the Neighborhood Landmark, which I will talk about on the next slide. So the proposed Neighborhood Landmark Overlay District establishes uses that are not permitted in the base zoning district to allow for the preservation and reuse of unique structures. There are no proposed changes to the existing structure or the exterior modifications. The uses provided will reside in the existing 2,770 square foot structure of the property. The proposed uses on the development plan include short-term rental property that is not owner-occupied, a museum, which is classified as a cultural center by Metro codes, and a multimedia production studio. There is currently space for approximately eight cars on the property without impacting street parking. No additional parking is proposed. The lot does front Nella Drive, and the access will continue to be from Nella Drive. Staff finds that the proposed uses are sensitive to surrounding properties, considering the use will occupy an existing structure, and the proposed plan meets the Neighborhood Landmark District criteria of the Metro zoning code. There are also conditions proposed to help alleviate previous concerns raised. Therefore, staff recommends approval with the conditions. And there are the presented conditions. Yeah, okay. Sorry. The permitted uses are limited to use of RS20, short-term rental property, non-owner-occupied, cultural center, and multimedia production. Short-term rental property uses shall be limited to one unit within the existing structure. This approval does not include any changes to the exterior of the structure. If any changes are proposed, it may require a new development plan. No signage is permitted with the exception of the existing Historic Landmark sign currently on the property. Any changes to the Neighborhood Landmark District and/or is associated development plan are subject to the provisions of Section 17.40.160. No concurrent uses shall be permitted. That, for example, if rented on short-term rental, neither the museum or multimedia production may be used during those rental times. The permitted museum and production studio uses shall close hours of operation at 8:00 p.m. Parking for all uses is limited to the driveway. No street parking is permitted.
Thank you. And so before we get started, just to go over how the hearing works is we hear the presentation. We hear from the applicant, which they have 10 minutes. Can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And then anyone wishing to speak in support. And everybody will line up behind the podium. Everybody have two minutes, and you have to state your name and address for the record. And then after everyone goes, then anyone wishing to speak in opposition. And then we'll have the rebuttal from the applicant council member, if the council member is here. And then we'll close the public hearing for us to address the public hearing. So we'll open this item... Commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in... And you have 10 minutes. You can... If you don't, you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. State your name and address for the record.
Yes. I'm Natalie Hannigan, and this is for regards to 815 Nella Drive. I'm more prepared this week. I have my thoughts kind of written down. So I am here to gain a Neighborhood Landmark for the express purposes of short-term rental, museum, and music studio. I agree with all the conditions except for prohibiting parking in the public road. I have worked with my councilwoman. I've attended council meetings and sent out all of my personal information to address any issues or misconceptions about this for the community. I want to keep the memory of this home alive and not change it. The owners previous to myself used to have films, shows, and photo shoots hosted there. And there was a movie that was actually shot where they moved neighbors' cars off-site. I have never used any of that for that purpose. I don't plan on allowing that for any purpose. Like, I would never put them out. And the previous owners had rented out the bottom part to Airbnb. So like, they had the downstairs, so it was like max four people. So the neighborhood's kind of used to that flow, and it didn't affect traffic then. This home is mentioned at least twice on the Goodlettsville government website as a tourist attraction. So currently, people do come by. Sometimes they come down the driveway. And there are a couple buses that occasionally come by as part of a tour package. So I do not foresee this affecting any sort of traffic flow that's already existing. The studio is not currently built, but when it is built, we are working with a sound engineer to make sure it's soundproof. And once again, one of the walls is underground... Two. Two of the walls are underground. One's facing the back of the house, and one's facing the garage. And it will be small, but we are working with the sound engineer just to double-check. The hours would be closed by 8:00 p.m. I have no qualms with any of that. And to put it out there, this home will still abide by all of the regular noise ordinances as if I live there. It will still have to answer to the same legislative bodies for all of their short-term rentals. I'm not asking to like skate by on anything. I want people who stay there to be mindful of the neighborhood. And just to address the street parking, I don't really feel it's fair to single me out. I've had a party there before, and we had overflow parking off of Nella Drive, and it didn't seem to affect anything. I just don't want it to be an issue in the future. I will never, ever advertise anyone parking the road. But if someone needs to, I don't see why it wouldn't be allowed in those weird one-offs because that driveway is huge. I don't really see it ever being an issue. But if it was, I just want that in the writing. Like, I don't see why we would limit that. And yeah, I'll save my last two minutes. But I just want to thank you for your consideration. And I can answer any questions, and I'll be back up for rebuttal.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll save two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
I have a device. Is that okay to bring up here?
Yes, you can bring a device to read off of it.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Susan Ghorbani. I live at 411 Altaloma Road in Goodlettsville.
But you have to talk into the microphone. There you go.
That's the rule, huh? Okay. Susan Ghorbani is my name. G-H-O-R-B-A-N-I. I live at 411 Altaloma Road in Goodlettsville. Any questions about that before I... Sure? Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. So Patsy Klein's Dream Home is one of the handful of historic icons that make Goodlettsville a truly unique experience for residents, for visitors, for business. Patsy is one of the most influential vocalists of the 20th century and is beloved to visitors from all over the world. Passage this motion would ensure this iconic structure representing Patsy's life and history not only lives on, but adds historical evidence and validity to Goodlettsville as being the chosen home to one of history's biggest and most beloved stars. The efforts that have been underway to restore the space to the look and feel of the era is astounding. Not sure if you've seen pictures. Allowing the space to provide a historical, short-term rental, recording, multimedia space, and cultural center offering while not disrupting the residential experience of the neighborhood, it's the most responsible use and responsible ask for use of this monumental piece of country music history. It opens the space to the public, but in a regulated, non-intrusive-to-neighbors way, making way for the natural use of a home, of a home structure. Rest, home, life, family, music. Versus big tours and events that are intrusive and is not being requested here today. This type of offering also ensures that visitors... Is that time?
Time flies when you're at the planning commission.
Okay, I've got like two, three more sentences. Is that okay? Or do I need to stop there?
Yeah, you have to stop, unfortunately.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If everybody would... If if everybody would, if there's a lot of people, then if everybody'd line up, that way we could, we can. One spokesman. Okay, perfect. And you can give the documents to the.
Good afternoon. Let me get up here. Good afternoon. My name is Judy McKenzie and I live at eight eighteen Nella Drive. I have just passed out two pictures of the Patsy Klein house, the yard, and a petition of twenty-two neighbors opposing this um, at these events that this Miss Hanigan wants. Um, the pictures show that uh, the yard is unkept. And everybody's yard gets a little ahead of them sometime, but this has been going on for three years. Um, this is what our neighbors and myself are concerned about. If something so simple as to cut your yard, cut your shrubs, clean out the dead trees, is not possible, how in the world is she going to manage everything that she wants to do to this house? She can't even keep the yard cut. The short-term rental, as stated, seven days a week. Oh, shoot. Uh, we want to ask some questions. Will, we want to know if she will screen and choose the guest, if she's gonna have large parties, like bachelorette parties for noise outside activities, the museum, uh, how the cars are gonna get there, if she, they're gonna drive or if it's gonna be buses. Uh, there's only eight parking places and no parking on the street according to your uh, conditions. And if she's gonna have a management company to help her oversee all this, not one person can do this. On the studio, that is ten hours a day. This house could be under twenty-four seven. The wall that she's gonna build, will it be soundproof for vibration and ba- uh, for her bass? And we would like to hear from Mrs. Hanigan on these issues.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Welcome. Please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Hal Balthrup. I live at eight ten Nella Drive. Uh, I did want to address something that the applicant uh, uh, mentioned. The former owners were, they lived there and they did host uh, Airbnb in the basement. But while they lived there, they did maintain the property and and some of the events that they uh, hosted there, they coordinated with the neighbors. Even the placement or removals of cars for period uh, recording that they wanted to do for the movies, they always included the neighbors in the planning of that. And as Ms. McKenzie pointed out, it just hasn't been maintained because no one's living there permanently, and that is part of our concern. And as we've all faced here in Nashville as development has come, the integrities of our neighborhoods for actually living in and and protecting our investments has become a challenge. So we just ask that the commission take that into consideration uh, upon your contemplation of this request. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Make sure we get everybody that wants to speak. All right, seeing none, rebuttal, two-minute rebuttal. And then the council lady can speak. Council lady.
Concerning my yard, I mowed the front lawn yesterday. It is hot. Um, there is a house down the road, eight twelve Nella Drive. The grass is as tall as I am right now. I, it is someone else's property, not my concern, but I understand. I feel like I have upped the grass game this year. Um, the flower beds in the front of the house have poison ivy. I've given myself poison ivy three times. I'm gonna have to have a professional come redo them. I have tried myself. It was a bad idea. Um, outside of that, um, once again, I am working with a sound engineer. The studio is not even there currently. Um, that and then what was the other concern? Oh, management company? Um, I live twenty minutes away. I I would be the landlord. Um, that's how Airbnb works. That's how like landlord. If I did this long-term rental, I would still manage it. Um, I don't have it. I will never have it on Insta book because I don't trust people and I put way too much time and effort into this home. So I will screen people. I'm not for twenty-something bachelorette parties. I want people who actually enjoy Patsy Klein to stay there and have an experience.
Thank you. Council lady?
Thank you. I want to start by thanking everyone, the neighbors for coming down and and expressing your concerns, concerns. We've been back and forth in email, so it's great to to put a face to to the neighbors. I will say that I rode down Nella Drive today and and looked at the property, looked at the width of the street, which it is very narrow. I would say is probably the minimum size of of street width. Um, so for me, the no parking on the street is a deal breaker. I mean, that that has to be a condition. I know that the owner has a concern about that, but the street is narrow and with the parking pad, that would address those concerns about parking on the street and traffic. So I I think that is important to have that condition. Um, I do have a uh, question about no signage because I I want to make sure that doesn't include no parking signs because I, what I'm concerned about is although that's no parking on the street is a condition, how how could that be enforced? And how can that be uh, proactively communicated? So I'm wondering about a no parking sign right there. Would that no park, no signage include something like that?
So council lady, we're not in deliberation yet?
Okay.
So if you'll just, we'll, we, we can definitely answer that, but we'll have to close the public hearing and we'll get to that.
So that's a question and and we'll put a pin in that. Um, overall, I think the conditions do address a lot of the concerns. I I, you know, I I do still share the concern about management. Uh, as I stated at the last meeting, there are other historic uh, homes. The um, Hank Snow Ranch, the Johnny Cash and and uh, home. And there are either a management company or somebody that is maintaining the lawn, maintenance of the house. And if if the owner is having problems doing that, I think it's important to have some, someone in place, a professional that can do that. I suspect that if the owner is able to um, get this landmark overlay and you and have the uses of the house that would generate income for the management company. So I maybe have another question for the owner as to, I mean, eh, why, is is it that you just don't want anyone else to manage it? Is it um, that if if you are operating the uses in this way, that you will get a management company? If you could just speak to that?
If I need a management company, I'm not against it, but I use management companies with long-term rental and they let my house go to crap. I want the hands-on. I want to be able to see things. I want to be able to check in. I just, I I want to be abreast of what's going on. Like, I really do care about this home.
And that's important. I mean, you should definitely not be hands-off. You need to be hands-on even with a management company managing it. But just in hearing the concerns about keeping the lawn cut, the shrubbery, maintenance of the house itself, I I saw it today and and it it needs some maintenance, things that you may not be able to do yourself. Do you have a problem committing to?
Oh, no, I'm getting a a gardener to come out professionally. We're gonna start from scratch in the front.
So you're you're committing to getting professional?
Mm-hmm. Oh, absolutely.
And and will this, uh, I guess what are your plans as far as if you get this overlay to be able to uh, have the resources to 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 generate that?
Yes, absolutely. Like, one comes with the other.
And council lady, when we get to the, out of the public hearing, we'll, we can do more questioning. It's just, I try to, you know.
Okay, thank you. So that that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Appreciate that. All right, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Here we go now. No, ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. So we have our rules that we have to go by and um, a lot of the questions, so hopefully by the end of the hearing and the questions will come out and we'll, I I believe that hopefully it will answer all your questions, okay? But the time for the public to speak was the, with a public hearing, and so we closed the public hearing and then now it's time for the commission to deliberate. That's just, that's our rules, so we can't uh, deviate from our our own rules. So I apologize for that. So couns- uh, council lady, you wanna ask the other question for the staff?
Thank you, yes. Uh, I think the first question was about the signage, if if uh, that includes any no parking signage. The the, I think it was number four condition.
So typically, um, if there is no parking signage, that is a process through Endot. And so that signage is different than sort of private signage. That's typically signage that Endot would install, and that would mean w- we have had conditions like this before for neighborhood landmarks where we say this neighborhood landmark may not use on-street parking. They need to keep all of the parking in the driveway. Now, that didn't necessarily mean that no one could park on the street. So if there is a discussion, and I think you as the council member could start that discussion with Endot, if you wanted this segment of the street to be no parking, that would be no parking for everyone. So neighbors, no one could park in that segment of the street if if it's signed as no parking. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, I will say when I was on the street today, no one was parked on the street except for Metro Water was there doing work, but there were no uh, cars parked on the street. So thank you for that. And then, um, I think I got my other questions answered when I wasn't supposed to, but thank you, Chair.
Thank you, council lady. Thank you for understanding. I appreciate that. Vice Chair, you wanna go first and then we'll see if anybody else has questions?
Sure. Um, so I I'm s- I'm sort of still wrapping my head a little bit around. I mean, I was reading, rereading the the neighborhood landmark district um, requirements and and I, you know, I certainly see the reason for this development plan in order to preserve the home. Um, I'm still struggling, as I was two weeks ago, with the non-owner, non-owner occupied short-term rentals here. Um, I understand that's the reason we have the landmark uh, district. Um, but this is not an area where we could have non-owner occupied short-term rentals if not for the landmark district. And I'm not sure that short-term rentals is necessary for preserving this specific house necessarily. So I'm I'm, I think I'm still struggling a bit with the short-term rentals, the non-owner occupied short-term rental, because I do think that could. I I certainly appreciate the applicant's uh, willingness to to say she's going to screen people carefully and I and I trust that that she, you know, intends to do that. Um, but I do think that ten people on a relatively quiet street could potentially be disruptive um, and and, you know, be a challenge for the for the neighborhood character. So I I have some concerns still with that. Um, looking at the conditions, I know that was what we talked about at the last meeting and trying to get better a little bit more clarity about this idea that only one use would be happening at one time. Um, based on a a condition six, which says that no concurrent uses will be permitted. It sounds like if the house is rented, then the museum will be closed and there will be nothing happening at the multimedia in the in the product uh, studio. That's the condition. Just clarifying that that the condition, condition six is clarifying what we discussed at the last meeting, which basically says if the house is rented, then neither of the other uses could be operational at that time.
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, I think that's gonna be a a management challenge to some degree, but um, and it's an unusual kind of, I think it's an unusual condition for us, but um, so, I mean, I I guess I'm gonna listen to what everyone else has to say. I I support this, um, but I I am uh, having a hard time with the short-term rental piece.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other discussion questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Clift?
Um, I I kind of place a high value on 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 historic preservation in the city, and I think we all do. And we've done better in a lot of cities. But we haven't done as well as I'd like. Uh, there's nothing to protect it right now. Uh, it is a pretty unique thing. I mean, I'm older than most people, of course, that are still living. Oh, yeah. But uh, that's a big name for me. That's a big thing about Nashville, the people I've heard that come here. So I I am generally supportive. Uh, there will be lots of people wanting to make sure this is done right and we'll be, the city will be hearing from them if we actually go through and this does happen. Um, but I I'm supportive at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Leslie, and then Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify in terms of parking. Uh, would buses be allowed to park in that parking lot or big buses?
Um, yeah. If um, you know, if they're there for maybe the museums open that day and they're coming to see it, then they would park in the parking lot or the driveway.
It's a long driveway. But I'm not a bus driver, so I do not know how they would maneuver in and out of there, so. And I don't know the dimensions or turning radius of buses, but in lo- in regards to space, a bus could fit.
So you could have a bus, maybe have like forty-something people, and then you could still have eight uh, pads where people could park also?
So there's the diagram um, of their parking. So maybe if they pulled in the cars first, they could pull in a bus behind that?
So there's no limit as to how many big buses could come in there as long as they can, as long as they can get in there?
There are occupancy limits as, limits per the fire code, so you can't just have an unlimited number of people in any space. So there there are occupancy limits, just general occupancy limits per fire code.
So I guess what I'm thinking, if we had a bus with forty people, twenty could stay in the bus and the other could go in. I'm just trying to figure out how it would look, you know, if you had.
I'm just not sure I can answer.
So uh, Lisa, just in terms of the framework, the driveway is private property and the private property would be managed by the fire code and the marshal and the private home would be managed by any any standards that the fire marshal would have. The street is public right-of-way. And so there is, it it, I mean, we don't typically, Endot would typically manage sort of the parking requirements on a street and they have a special process for that. We are including a particular condition here to address some of the concerns that we heard in the narrow right-of-way. Um, and so, um, but I think to the question, I just want to make sure we're understanding the concern. I just want to reassure you, there are entities that manage access and how many people can be in a space at once, if that, does that answer the question?
Not really.
Okay.
Um, what I'm, what I'm just trying to figure out, if I had three buses, could we all come in and go in as long as they fit? And I'm I'm envisioning three big buses coming down the road and pu- if there's room. And I see you have eight pads, but there's nothing prevent, to prevent the bus from all three parking in there. And and I understand the codes as to how many can go in at one time. I'm just trying to visualize how all these, these buses would come down the street on a narrow lane. And so there's nothing in the provision that will prevent, we don't have anything to do with the, how many buses, right?
I'd welcome Lisa's, I mean, we don't, we don't typically limit if it's public right-of-way on the street. We don't typically limit buses today. I mean, I guess Endot potentially could do that. I'm not sure. Um, but we we at the commission, if it's public right-of-way, would not typically try to restrict a particular vehicle, um, unless I'm, I'm missing something.
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good question. Um, Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you. So my clarification would be, I saw the uh, opposition that passed around and maybe the council lady or staff could answer, but how was the support in this particular district other than what we see today against it? Can you address that?
Yes, thank you for that question. We, there were two community meetings held uh, prior to the uh, first hearing that was held on July twenty-fifth. At the, at those meetings, uh, well, at the first meeting, the initial request was for a commercial zoning, and there was a lot of concerns. I expressed concerns about the commercial zoning because it would have been more intense. It would have allowed uh, additions to the home and changes to the home and and other things. Uh, to, it would have allowed the bi- a business operation on a residential street. So, uh, after that first meeting, which I believe was in June, we had another meeting in July where the, uh, applicant had changed, revised the application from the commercial zoning to the neighborhood, uh, overlay, landmark overlay, which is less intense than the commercial zoning. At that particular meeting, there wasn't opposition expressed. However, a lot of the residents who are here today weren't at that, uh, meeting. And so, uh, I have been communicating with the residents through, um, email mostly and phone calls. And they, uh, expressed concerns about what we're talking about, the parking. So at the last, uh, public hearing, the, uh, commission decided that we needed to look at adding other conditions, which I agreed with, to address, uh, the neighbors' concern, the immediate neighbors' concerns. And that's what we've added today. So there hasn't been another meeting since the, um, the last public hearing. First of all, it was two weeks ago, and second of all, because I had been communicating with the neighbors, the immediate neighbors. The, the last two meetings, the immediate neighbors weren't there. There were other neighbors. And so I felt, okay, now I need to just communicate directly with the immediate neighbors. So that's what we've done over the last two weeks.
All right, thank you. My general feeling would be that the historic value of that property would add to, um, would only benefit that community, uh, especially if it's done, you know, the right way and with the right spirit. And I do think the owner, um, maybe should look at some type of management-type situation with it, knowing how, um, those things work. But my general consensus is that, that historic property, you know, and the conditions that the staff has added to it, I would be in support, you know, of approving it, you know, with those conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Questions? We'll need a motion. Uh, yes, Commissioner Dundon.
I just have a question. If you could explain a little bit, what, what is the difference between the Historic Landmark Overlay District and the Neighborhood Landmark Overlay District? Cause it looks like it already is in the Historic Landmark Overlay. And is the Neighborhood Landmark Overlay simply allowing these additional uses? I think that's what you said, but if you could just clarify that for me.
Yes, a historic overlay is primarily, um, to protect the structure from inappropriate, uh, changes. Um, and so there would be standards if any modifications were sought. But they, um, it's placed on top of sort of the existing zoning, which is residential. The Neighborhood Landmark is another tool that can be utilized by, um, properties that are important to a community, the broader community, to allow for adaptive reuse of uses that would not otherwise be permitted. Um, and so it would still be zoned residential with a historic landmark. And if this was approved, then a Neighborhood Landmark. And so the Historic Landmark sort of protects from modifications to the building. The Neighborhood Landmark allows uses, um, for the adaptive reuse of the property.
Yeah, and I, I think I, I share some of my colleagues', um, support for this. And, um, the, I think the income from the, from these various uses, and in particular the Airbnb, is probably necessary for her to, and to, to continue taking care in the way that we've all expressed. We hope that happens, and I'm definitely not convinced that hiring a management company can make things better. I've definitely had experience with some that don't do a very good job. It's a huge waste of money. So having that hands-on person that, um, uh, that she is saying that she will be in terms of watching. And it sounds like the neighbors are gonna be paying attention too. So if things are, if they're violating the codes, people are gonna be calling if there's noise problems or, and I assume the same rules for all Airbnbs in terms of noise ordinances and things would apply. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions?
I have one more-
Vice Chair.
Question. Um, if the property was sold, I forget what happens with the Neighborhood Landmark Overlay. Does that transfer with the property? I assume it does.
Yes, it's, it is the zoning on the property, and so it would stay on the property.
Okay.
Um, short-term rental is a little bit different. A new, the, the permit is not transferable, but the use would still be permitted. And so a new permit, a new person could get a new short-term rental permit.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
But the use, the permitted uses stay.
Okay.
All right, Vice Chair or Council Lady?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that, um, with these new conditions, I'm comfortable moving forward, but I will still continue, this, this has to go to the council. Um, and because I, because it meets the policy and because we've added these conditions to address neighbors' concern, I'm comfortable moving forward at this stage. As it goes through the council, uh, for three readings, there's another public hearing, but I will continue to work with the neighbors, uh, to make sure that we're, um, dotting all the i's and crossing the t's on concerns, uh, before final approval at the council level.
Thank you, Council Lady. And the Council Lady has said that several times, and she's always kept her word, so I appreciate that. Any other discussion or questions? We'll need a motion. Somebody, Commissioner Clifton?
Move we approve with all staff.
Staff's recommendations?
That's the word, recommendations.
And conditions?
And conditions.
That's a proper motion. There is a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Ayes have it, and it is adopted. I want to thank the neighbors for coming down. Appreciate it. And there'll be another public hearing and working with your council lady. Thank you. All right, so that leads us to item number twelve. And Commissioners, this is, um, on you, on your agenda. This was not on the consent. It does state that the public hearing was closed, but the staff is recommending that we open the public hearing back up. Is there a motion to open the public hearing back up? Or is, do we need an explanation from, from the team? Yeah, let's get an explanation. I'm sorry. See, I'm rushing things today. All right. Okay. Oh, during the presentation?
Yes. Uh, so this is item twelve.
Yeah, the presentation.
And I just briefly, this is a rezoning request from the applicant at forty-two-twelve Ashland City Highway. Uh, they requested a rezone from RS fifteen to RM nine NS. So, am I, my history, okay, sorry. The history slide here. Um, so the commission previously heard this item on June thirteenth of twenty-twenty-four. The public hearing was held and then closed. Um, the commission expressed a desire to hear from the applicant. If the commission is wishing to hear from the applicant or members of the public, the public hearing will need to be reopened. Okay, so the subject site is currently RS fifteen and currently occupied by a single-family residential unit. The properties to the south and east are currently occupied by single-family residential units. And the properties to the north and west are currently vacant. Beyond those properties are a public park, an SP-zone property approved for detached and attached single-family residential units, and an RM-nine-zoned multifamily residential development. The property lies within a T-three suburban neighborhood policy area. The proposed RM-nine NS zoning district falls within the range of zoning districts and residential densities supported by the T-three NE policy. Uh, because the proposed rezoning to RM-nine NS is consistent with the T-three NE policy and supports a continuation of the higher intensity uses and higher residential densities found on neighboring properties to the northwest, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you. You do great work. Good job. All right, Commissioners, uh, so this item was, as I had stated before, uh, the public hearing was closed, staff's recommending that we reopen it. Is there objection to reopening the, how about we do it that way? Is there objection to reopening the public hearing? Seeing none. Well, we'll reopen the public hearing. So we're opening the public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome. And you'll have ten minutes. You can save two of the minutes of the ten for rebuttal if you'd like. And if you could just state-
Also, I brought some handouts. It'll be helpful.
That would be great.
I can pass you this way. There's two.
Thank you.
All right.
State your name and address.
Excellent. Hi, my name's Josh McDonald. My address is thirty-eight eighteen Hyatt Sphera Road, which is literally right around the corner from here. And, um, so the, so let me backtrack. So on the thirteenth, I was not here, because I believe this was on the twenty-seventh, cause I had another thing on the twenty-seventh, so that's how that kinda happened there. So, so sorry about that. I really apologize for that. Uh, but for this site here, the plan and intention is effectively four detached, single-family homes. Now, as you look on the map and we see where the outline is, surveys are a little bit different from what we see on GIS. So it's actually like, the lines are a little bit bigger. Uh, the total frontage on the property is about a hundred and sixty feet. And the intention is effectively building, would end up being four detached thirty-foot-odd homes. One, two, three, four, fronting Ashland City Highway. So to accomplish that, that's where we kinda came up with the RM-nine made the most sense. And RM-nine NS, there's no need for short-term rental. It's gonna effectively be, you know, residential. For, planning doesn't look at it this way, but for all intents and purposes, for single-family homes, so it'd be detached. Uh, but of course, the planning doesn't see it that way. Um, and that's pretty much the gist. So what I'm passed around is effectively the house or the type of house planned to build. You can see the mock-up. You can also see the house actually built, um, and what that looks like. And so since I, I live in this area and I go to the YMCA in the area, um, and I drive by this, I drive this way every day, I'm very committed to basically improving the quality and also like number of housing in this particular pocket. I respect the history, particularly for this area, cause it's always been predominantly middle and upper-middle-class African-American housing. And, um, again, that's the reason why I believe it's very important to build higher-quality housing. And I'm not trying to build like attached homes or like, I guess, quote-unquote, tall and skinnies or, um, things that are, um, maybe deemed a little bit, you know, more entry-level. Similar to some other projects nearby that have like higher-density zoning. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions or, you know, address any concerns. And, um, I can save the rest of my time. I don't really need it, I don't think.
Thank you, sir. We'll save two, two minutes for your rebuttal.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I believe that we don't need a rebuttal, if that's okay, sir? Okay, so see, yeah, well, well, if we have questions. The reason why this got deferred was because the applicant wasn't here last time, so. Seeing no one, I don't see the council member, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and so... How about we start over here? Commissioner Leslie, we, see, we go back and forth. Any, we'll start with you and then if there's any more discussion.
Okay. So I'm familiar with that area, and I understand that in the past, it was high-income people living in the area. And I'm just curious, the house that's proposed, what's the square footage of the house? Do we have those, or?
Because this is a straight-zoned, it's a straight zoning, we don't have a site plan that we're reviewing. And so all of the bulk standards would just need to be, need to meet the requirements of the zoning district. And so we don't have those details.
So I appreciate the developer wants to, doesn't wanna do a lot of attached housing to it. You know, those single-family housings, I think it would be, uh, benefit to the neighborhood, so I'm not opposed to it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Or if there's not, maybe a motion, Commissioner Leslie, maybe a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt the recommendations.
That's a proper motion, a motion to adopt. Is there a second? There's a second. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye? Pose. No ayes have it, and it is adopted. Thank you for coming down, sir. All right, Commissioners, that leads us to item number fourteen. Selena.
All right, Selena Coningsheim presenting item number fourteen on your agenda. The request is to rezone from R forty to RS twenty, and staff's recommendation is to approve. The seven-point-nine-three-acre site is located along the southern side of Old Hickory Boulevard in the Green Hills area. Uh, the properly, property presently has a single-family home. Um, adjacent zoning to the east and west is R forty, and surrounding land uses are single-family residential and vacant lands. There are two policies on the site, suburban neighborhood maintenance, which is intended to maintain the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods, and conservation policy to the south, which is intended to preserve environmentally-sensitive land features through protection and remediation. On this site, the conservation likely addresses the stream and surrounding area along the southern property line. Uh, the subject site is within the T-three NM policy area, which is focusing on maintaining the general character of developed suburban neighborhoods. Um, there's a residential PUD to the west, uh, that neighborhood right immediately next to it. And the majority of those lots range from about twelve thousand to forty-four thousand, uh, square feet, but the most of them are under twenty thousand square feet, um, which is below the lot size of the underlying zoning district, which is R forty. Uh, the proposed RS twenty could continue the development pattern of smaller lot sizes in the area and still support the policy guidance to maintain the general character of the existing suburban neighborhoods. Uh, because this rezoning aligns with the intent of the policy and would allow for the continuation of the surrounding development pattern of smaller lots developed with single-family uses, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, and we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome, and you all have ten minutes. You can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and dress. Welcome.
William Purser, uh, Alliance Engineering Consulting, uh, four-eighty Duke Drive.
Lucas Lampkin, Alliance Engineering Consulting, four-eighty Duke Drive.
So as, uh, was mentioned, we're looking to rezone from R forty to RS twenty. The owners are looking to build, uh, seven home sites in this. It would be twenty thousand, uh, square feet, uh, or larger, uh, trying to maintain that look that is in the area. There have been some concerns brought up, uh, especially in regards to, uh, traffic and with, uh, water, both in water quantity and water quality. Uh, in regards to the, uh, traffic, uh, situation with there being proposed seven home sites in this, looking at, uh, the ITE, uh, International Transportation Engineers Council, their studies that are recognized, uh, nationwide for a development of this size, you'd be looking at approximately a hundred and two trips per day for this type of development. With that, during peak AM hours, you'd be looking at about seven trips in that peak hour in the morning, and then about nine, uh, in the afternoon. These trips would consist of the residents within the subdivision, you know, coming and going is needed. School buses, delivery trucks, those type of things. So overall, the impact, uh, for this type of development in this area would be negligible, negligible in the overall scheme of things, if you will. Uh, in regards to water quality and water quantity, uh, we're required in the design process to look at, uh, Metro's requirements, and we would need, or we would be following those requirements to meet those conditions. From our preliminary studies that we've done thus far, we would be able to, uh, meet those requirements, if not exceed those requirements, in meeting both, uh, water quality and water quantity. Uh, the Middleton subdivision to the west, all of that currently, or the majority of that subdivision currently drains onto the subject property, uh, as well as properties to the north and to the east. Otter Creek, uh, goes through the site, uh, towards the south of the property. Uh, that would have to, of course, be maintained with those, uh, regulations, meeting TDEC and Metro requirements to protect that as, and such. Yeah, uh, the other items were- Yeah. The other items were the character of the, you know, meeting the character requirements. And the owners are working to keep, maintain and continue that same character that's in the adjacent area, subdivisions and such. And there, some other comments that had been received were in regards to light and noise pollution, and talking with the owners, you know, they would do everything within their power and responsibility to minimize those type impacts. There's some things in that regard that, you know, they're wanting to be good neighbors. They currently live there and plan on being there once this is developed. So, they want to be a part of this and be good neighbors. So, that's the information I have. So, any other questions or? So.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And we'll save two minutes for your rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the room wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome. State your name and address. We appreciate you coming.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Pereira. My wife and I own the property and currently live there. And the genesis of this started about a year ago. Our kids are matriculating through high school and college. I find myself doing the heavy lifting on property management and yard work. I can't do it as easily as I used to. Ten hours in the, in the yard leaves me a little, a little sore the next day. But our intention is to stay on the property. We want to have eight home sites, one of which would be ours, so seven other homes. And we want to be in a nice, well-kept, high-end neighborhood, in keeping with the other neighborhoods around the area. So, we, we've just got real designs on keeping a cohesive look with the, the property and the homes that we want to have put on there, five thousand square feet, kind of a downsizing, if you will, from eight acres down to, you know, point four acres, I believe, twenty thousand square feet. So, we're excited about it. We've, we've been open and honest and transparent in the community meeting we recently had and other questions we fielded. But some of the concerns, I, I'm not real sure, William mentioned one of the, the traffic issues. I would say one of the main culprits is CPA, which is a thousand feet to the, to the west, you know, with a pre-K all the way to twelfth grade. So, during school year, it gets, it's hectic, it's congested. So, certainly, certainly see that. But for eight homes, I'm not sure that that would be a huge concern. But we love the area and we want to stay there. And we want to be in a nice subdivision. So,
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome. Oh, we're.
Time's up.
We'll restart you. Okay, here we go.
My name's Brett Wright. I'm here on behalf of Alan Heather Looney, that lived at seventy-five Chatham Court. Their property abuts this property. They lived in Middleton for many years and are in favor of this project, you know, think it'll be an asset to the community with the proper architectural controls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, there. Getting old. Got to have my glasses. I'm Carissa Pereira. I'm the owner of the property with my husband, Tim. Thank you guys for being here today. And I'm sorry that our councilwoman saying to you and couldn't be here today with us. But she's been great with fielding calls. We had done a subdivision like this before, MacArthur Ridge Court on Granny White Pike. And my husband and I have a real desire. We love outdoors, is why we moved here. And our kids have been working this property for eight-plus years now. There's a real desire to want to have a smaller backyard when you get older and your kids are gone. So, our desire is to have a small, high-end boutique neighborhood with amazing materials. We've hired an extremely reputable engineering firm, spent a lot of money doing our due diligence. We don't even know if this is going to happen. This is just a possibility. There might be one owner that wants to come and buy the whole kit and caboodle right now. So, we have it on the market right now for sale. So, we just listed it. So, we're between five private schools, and a lot of people want these type homes where they have a half acre. My parents live next door. They're on point-three acres. So, these are larger lots. There's precedent down the street to the right. We love our neighbors to the right and the left. We love our neighbors, the Isaacs, that are on the other side, and want to maintain a great relationship with them. They've been great to us. We've been great to them. We love their property. They've enhanced their property. We've put millions into our property. We love, again, the outdoors. So, this is country living in the city, basically, with lots of walking trails at the back, community barn, community garden. It's all about community is what we're trying to build. And the name of the neighborhood is called Magnolia Court. So, anyway, it's really wonderful, and we had a lot of excitement about it. And I just wanted to tell you thank you for your time and just share a little bit more.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Tracy Johnson, and I live just two doors down at two-two-one-one Old Hickory Boulevard. I like the Pereiras. I like the Isaacs. I love my neighborhood. But I bought my house because it was a house on an acreage, and that's really hard to get. And so, like Chris has said, it, I mean, honestly, it is like country living in the city. It's a great location. It's a great spot. For me, my concern is just the assurances of how things are going to be developed, and does it need to go to R forty? If you can put five or six homes on R twenty, whatever it's currently zoned for, the opposite, I don't know if I'm saying that quite right. But that's my concern out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Jason Holloman, forty-two ten Park Avenue, here on behalf of immediate property owners. And I think the applicant has really identified our largest concern. This is not an SP zoning. This is a straight zone from R forty to RS twenty. And while that may seem somewhat lateral at first look, as you can see from the staff report, the entitlements that go with that are a hundred and seventy percent in terms of the available lots. Now, I understand subdivision will probably reduce that due to roads and other conditions. But, but we don't know what that is now. You know, the subdivision comes later. The subdivision comes when you sit quasi-judicially. So, you don't have the flexibility to really look at the policy in the same way that you do with the rezoning. And so, what I would say is, there have been conversation about design controls. You've even heard of the desire to, to support the neighbors in that, light concerns, noise concerns. As the previous speaker said, this is some of the last large-track residential property in Davidson County. And it is in the T-three neighborhood maintenance category. I understand that the subdivision immediately adjacent to it is somewhat comparable in terms of what's built out. But the whole area is zoned R forty. And the subdivision that's being referenced as a pattern is nineteen-eighties. It predates our community planning process. So, since we've had a community planning process, this has stayed as a large-track area. And so, I would submit to you that, that the neighborhood maintenance policy that these folks got together and supported when, when the community character manual came down is much more consistent with what you see to the west, the large-track, as opposed to what is being proposed. So, at a minimum, we would ask that this be recommended for disapproval until we can have a specific plan that addresses many of those concerns.
Thank you, council. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Renee Isaacs. And our address is two-two-one-seven Old Hickory. And we are the direct adjacent of property owner. We currently have ten acres. We already have flooding issues as it is. We've had to ratchet strap our furniture, if you will, in the pavilion in the back to keep it from floating off. So, I don't think that anyone needs to take the water runoff lightly because it is an issue currently. I'm more concerned of opening Pandora's Box if you all pass this, because we already have a stressed infrastructure on Old Hickory Boulevard as it is right now. And all of these larger tracks, if we go to, okay, we'll do this, and this one goes, and this one goes, Pandora's Box will be opened. And I am pro-development. And I think this just strongly needs to be considered on, not the effects just of now, but the long-term effects, because this is a real issue that we have. And when you have to wait in the morning to get out of the driveway for five minutes and pray to God that you're not going to get sideswiped, we knew that when we moved there. But I believe that if you do pass this, and all these larger tracks go, oh, well, I can do this. This is a good idea, then we're going to see problems in that part of town that we've never seen before, when we already have them now. So, I would appreciate a strong consideration to disapprove this, not because it's my opinion, because I just think it's not the right thing to do for the community. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Sean Henry. I represent Mrs. Isaacs and her husband. And I've just handed out a little diagram for you to take a look at. And I may not have had enough. So, if you have to share, forgive me. What I want to draw your attention to, there's, there's three streets now intersecting with Old Hickory Boulevard in yellow. You've got the adjacent development, Middletown Park, it intersects. There's about thirteen-hundred feet before you get to the private driveway, private roadway that serves the thirty-five acres that are surrounded in blue. And then another eleven-hundred feet before you get to the Chickering Woods Drive, where there's another thirty-two homes on fifteen acres. The, the issue here is that this particular parcel is one of nine parcels. And if this one is rezoned, then what follows is the subdivision, which we've already seen. It's called Magnolia Court subdivision. They've already disclosed what that would look like. The challenge here for you, and we think it's frankly pretty easy, is to look at this more comprehensively, because piecemeal zoning leads to incremental subdivision that don't connect to adjacent properties. And that's what was already begun by the two subdivisions that are, that are there now. What we're asking you to look at is this thirty-five acres and these other properties, and there's only five property owners here amongst this thirty-five. You can see the applicant owns two other lots. The Isaacs own the two that are adjacent to it. Ms. Johnson's on here. The third, this, this private road that's there now should be looked at comprehensively with a zoning approach. It's not the RS twenty. It's the piecemeal rezoning, one parcel at a time, which is going to lead to a road and an intersection at Old Hickory Boulevard that's only going to create more and more traffic problems there. So, our request is for you to disapprove this. Let this developer come back with a larger rezoning project and a subdivision that'll work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Just want to make sure we get everybody. All right, seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
We appreciate all the comments and everything. And as always, part of our desire as engineers is to meet the requirements, try to do our best to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. That is part of our responsibility as engineers. When it comes to items such as drainage and such, we do everything within our power and to meet and follow the guidelines that are prepared by, whether it's Metro or any other municipality or governing agency. My desire throughout my career has been to do everything in my power to meet, if not exceed, those requirements. One of the things that we'd be doing as we look at this, once we got further into the design process, would be to look at and do what we can within the property to mitigate any of those concerns and meet the requirements that are out there to reduce impacts of any flooding or drainage issues and such, as well as to meet water quality impacts. Again, the, when it comes to traffic, we feel that the contributions that this would be making to the traffic situation would be negligible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The councilman, I don't see the council member. So, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Henley, you want to go first?
Thank you, Chair. I think, well, first, I want to, I want to think all that came because I, you know, hearing the context is, is always helpful. But I think one of the things that stood out to me is, you know, there seems to already be an envisioned subdivision, a next step. And so, I think it might be helpful just to hear a little bit about what we're seeing now versus kind of what the next step might look like, if that's, if that's planned. Is there something?
Yeah. So, currently, what's under review is a rezoning. A subdivision previously had been filed, but it was put on hold to process the rezoning. So, whatever subdivision does take place in the future would have to meet all the subdivision regulations. And there's, because of the conservation policy on the site, too, there might be potential for that conservation subdivision regulations to be met as well.
And so, what I've heard is it sounds like there's eight, eight units that are planned. I know one of the, the points that was made, as we heard in opposition, is, you know, being able to increase beyond what the current zoning is. But with that subdivision application already in place, and this just being on pause, is that essentially what we would expect? Or would this be diverted if that changed? Is that, maybe I asked that in a confusing way?
So, a subdivision plan has been submitted, but as Selena said, we have not been reviewing that because the zoning is being processed. However, it is likely that the subdivision as filed would need changes, because a very initial, very initial quick review of the land indicates that it may trigger the conservation subdivision development standards that you all adopted as part of the zoning code. And if so, those standards have different allowances for lot sizes or how you create those lots, or what areas have to be set aside and preserved. And so, I, I don't know that we are sort of able to determine at this point how many lots may be created based on a subdivision that we have not reviewed yet.
Understand. I just, I just wanted to understand how to process that because it was presented in a, in a couple of different, couple of different ways. I think, you know, the thing I hear here, which I, I, we hear often, is, you know, some of the challenges of the public realm and traffic in an area. And then, sometimes it limiting or kind of convoluting the view of a, of a site development. I'm, I'm not necessarily sure that the, the changes, I, I think I may be more inclined to agree with the presentation from the applicant that, you know, I wouldn't say negligible, but definitely not something significant enough to deter my support for, for densification. But I, I do understand that it seems to be an area that may need to have its own type of activity study done. I've, I've been in the position, whether it's fortunate or unfortunate, of, you know, having the burden as a singular property owner to initiate and catalyze a process that looks at a larger area. But having done that, it's been something that I think has improved the area. I don't know if that's appropriate for, for this. But I, I just, I will put that out there. You know, I think there are positive results that can come from a, a look that's more comprehensive. I think that was one of the things that was presented to us. Outside of that, and I'll listen to my fellow commissioners, again, I'm not, I'm not inclined to have a, a negative response, or more so to support what's being seen. But I did hear a couple of the, those who speak in opposition kind of asking for something that may be a little bit more restrictive. And so, I don't know if that's something that the applicant has entertained. But I know we're here looking at a, a straight rezone. So, it seems as though some of those wouldn't be satisfied with this, with this approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions, discussion, or vice chair?
Can we see the, the zoning map for the area?
Is that, what, is the, was the one that shows us like how, but normally we see it by color and it shows like, am I crazy? The one that shows like all of the RS?
So that, that, go back one. That is, this is the zoning map, so they're, they're typically always in black and white. What, there is, my gosh, my phone is trying to...
Do you mean the community character map? No, I was looking at the, I just wanted, so, so really this entire area is zoned R40 except for the one lot that we're looking at right now.
So the, the one, the one lot that we're looking at is R40 as well. Across the street is a satellite city, and so we don't have the zoning in that area. And so that's where that thick black line is. And so everything in this area is all zoned the same. That's within our jurisdiction. Um, the, the, the layer that shows the PUD, Planned Unit Development, is not turned on. But the property right immediately west of this one, where you see Middleton Court and the smaller lots, that is within a Planned Unit Development. And so that Planned Unit Development, although zoned R40, has lots that range from twelve thousand up to forty thousand, although most are around twenty thousand.
Okay. And if we move forward with the rezone, I know the applicant has said eight homes, it sounds like, I mean, looking at this originally, it said that it could go up to a total of seventeen single-family lots. Obviously, that would be impacted by the, the conservation issues. It does give me a little pause because, I mean, we don't know that eight is the maximum number of units and this property is for sale right now. So it gives me a little pause that if we do, you know, we could be allowing more than just eight, eight units right now.
Commissioner, my suggestion, because to your point, we're not looking at a subdivision and there's no, we can't hold anyone to any representations about what that subdivision would be at this point, is just to look at this from a policy perspective. And I think you could certainly agree or disagree with staff on that, but it, you know, we're not in a position to limit what they do on this application.
Right.
So that would be a future, future discussion.
My concern was just that if, with a straight rezone, we're not just looking at a subdivision of eight units, it could be up to seventeen. So I want to think about the impact of that. I mean, to me, this, I, I'm sympathetic to the, the adjacent landowner's concern that we could be opening up Pandora's Box. And I think about Battery Lane driving up into, you know, every single large lot there has now been redeveloped into a subdivision of eight homes that come out on one main street. And the traffic really is not, it, it's, it's pretty bad. And I, I, you know, obviously, this is an area that's got some beautiful old homes, and I'm doubtful that all of them are going to, to turn quickly. But I, I, it does worry me to start opening this up. I mean, we have everything zoned the same, at least in this area. And I think that I would probably be more comfortable with, I mean, I don't know if a specific plan would be an alternative for this lot, but not necessarily going down the path of rezoning one lot, which could then lead to something that, without a more, you know, comprehensive look at the area. So.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and Council lady.
Thank you, Chair. I, I share Commissioner Farr's concerns about the spot zoning. And I do have a question. Was the subdivision to the, is that the west? To the west, created under the R40 zoning? Has it always been R40 for that area?
It is, but it is within a Planned Unit Development also.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I, I share those concerns about the straight zoning. And because the other parcel close to it was in the Planned Unit Development, it, it's, it's different than, than this, than this parcel neighboring it. Was there any consideration or any discussion about a specific plan for this? And, and how did the staff come to the approval of just rezoning this one property when I know normally we, we try to look holistically at those things?
Sure. So, um, no, the application was filed as a rezoning to RS20, and so that's what we reviewed, based on the land use policy being neighborhood maintenance and the existing pattern, which is somewhat irregular. But given the size of the lots immediately to the west, staff felt as though it did meet the intent of the neighborhood maintenance policy for an, with the RS zoning, so.
Well, I will say, Commissioner, I mean, we, we respond, obviously, as Ms. Milligan mentioned, to an application in front of us. We, we always prefer a more comprehensive look. And there are some instances where we will suggest that a rezoning might be premature until such time as an adjacent property is under contract and you're really pushing a private property owner in that instance to rethink a development. And sometimes that can work or, or sometimes not. Often, that is based on a constraint, like an environmental condition that you see here or adjacency to a large street where we want to manage mobility in a different, in a different way.
Thank you for that additional comment because that, it kind of goes to my next question, which is because of the, the stream before a floodway, and because this particular parcel is immediately, you know, adjacent to the, the PUD that was developed, would it, was that considered? And would those be things that might prohibit any continuation of any rezoning for the RS40 moving to the east?
I mean, I think, so this is one of the bigger properties being almost eight acres. And so generally, larger properties that are rezoning to districts that have smaller lots, there's more flexibility there to create a workable subdivision because it's of the size. As you sort of move east, the sites become a little bit more constrained from an environmental es- aspect and from a size aspect. And so we do sort of evaluate each request individually on the merits of that request. And we don't necessarily see a rezoning on a street as setting a precedent for other rezonings on that se- street. We very much review each request on the merits of that request and the context of that property.
Okay, that, that's, that's helpful. And that, that does kind of speak to some of the neighbors' concern of the sprawling rezoning, that this particular property is unique in, in its position and its size where those other properties wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily fall in that same category. So thank you for that. I'll just, I'll continue to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Council lady. Any other discussion? Questions? Yes, Commissioner Allen.
So under the existing zoning, it looks like it says it allows a maximum of eight lots?
So those numbers that we provide are always, it's just a, it's a mathematical exercise. And so it's basically like the entire acreage of the property is this many acres. If you just divide it out by what the required lot size is, then it gives you the number. And so we are always sort of careful to add and say that that is not taking into consideration streets or stormwater areas or whatever that may be required. And so I think it's fair to say that typically those numbers are a bit higher because it's just a, a straight math exercise.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay, I was just wondering if, you know, we keep hearing eight lots, but that, that makes a lot of sense, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? We need some type of motion or... Commissioner Clifton?
I don't have a motion yet, but, but a question. I don't know if all of this was news to the different parties or to the staff, all of the suggestions and, and observations. I'm not sure I'm ready to vote this up or down, though. I'd be for some kind of deferral for the staff to mull over what they've heard and see what else they might or might not decide would be an improvement. I'm, I'm not quite ready to say, no, we, we don't want to, we need to reject this. Just not, maybe that's the wrong way to look at it, but that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I, I feel like we've had a lot of good discussion, a lot of great questions, a lot of good testimony. And, you know, sometimes, generally, we defer when, and we ask the staff to do more something. And so we, we, although on this particular instance, it's maybe asking the parties to maybe get together or something, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm the same as you, Commissioner. I'm not su- sure that, I'm, I'm torn, like you, torn. And so maybe we, generally, though, I'd like to generally have a, a deferral for a reason. But Vice Chair, any, any suggestions or comments?
No, I was just going to ask, I mean, is a specific plan something that would make sense to consider here? I can't, I, I, I mean, I'm sort of torn with, I'd like to see what that looked like more so than just the straight rezoning. And I also think that would give us more control if the property does sell, to know what's going to be there. But, but, you know, it also doesn't really totally feel like the kind of lot that we normally see as a specific plan.
I mean, a specific plan would give you some certainty about the layout for this particular parcel. It wouldn't solve the question of, you know, whether a more unified development plan that included some other parcels and whether that could accomplish a better traffic management pattern on Old Hickory Boulevard. And so you could certainly say, we want more specific information about this, and we want information about whether there is an option to acquire more land. We do put that on the table periodically, and that's what I've heard from you today. Sometimes it, it can't be done. We can't compel a private property owner to do that. But if that's a factor in your thinking, then that's certainly something that everyone is hearing you say today, and we can certainly put that on the table.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I, I feel like there are, the property is up for sale, and I think you bring up a very good argument that we, if we do a straight rezoning, we don't, we're not guaranteed, you know, eight houses or seven houses or the look of the houses. And I think certainty for us is an important thing. So any other discussion? Any other questions? You know, we, Director, if we deferred at one meeting, would that hint, what is the procedural process of that?
Let me at least ask anything that's filed.
At least give us update on the procedure.
Is there anything that's been filed? Okay.
There's nothing pending at council. There's no council bill.
What would your advice be?
I don't think, if you, if there is to be any sort of conversation, I don't think that typically one meeting is not long enough because of the Turner, we're already working on the staff reports for the next meeting.
True.
Minimum two.
So Commissioners, any other discussion? Commissioner Dunedin?
So if we defer it, I just, I'm not clear exactly what we're asking for defer, like what, what do we want the staff or the parties to do? I'm just not clear about why we're asking for a defer.
What I, so, first, I think you could make a motion, or the chairman could walk us through what that looks like if you were ready to vote, and the commissioners would vote on whether they think this, it meets the policy today. If you vote to defer, I'm interpreting the deferral to, to do two things. One is you're looking for more specific details, such as a plan layout, architectural standards and other things that give a specific unit count. That can only be accomplished through an SP if we're doing that as a, as a rezoning. A subdivision would give some of that information, but that's not going to happen until later. So if the commission wants more direct information today before making a decision, an SP would be the path. The second is, and there are some instances where we will say to an applicant, we think the zoning is premature, and it's usually around mobility, and we'll say, you need to come with a larger development plan that includes other properties. That is not something we can compel, but that is a conversation I will have, or Lisa and her team will have, during the deferral period. And a developer in some instances will go away and they will buy more land and come back with a more uniformed development plan. And in some instances, it doesn't happen, in which case, you know, we'll come back to you with that, with that report. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. And did you say the property is currently up for sale?
Yes, well, I, I heard that testified. Yeah, there is testimony to that.
So, so if the property changes hands between now and the next meeting, what does that mean for the, does the, does the application go away when the applicant no longer owns the property?
If the property changes hands and then, and the new owner wanted to continue with the process, they would have to sign an application to rezone. So we, we would not continue to move it forward unless the new owner wanted it to move forward. The owner of the property has to be the applicant on a rezoning, well, or various other Metro people. But if it's a prob, if it's an application like this, the owner has to be, be a party to it.
And the idea with the SP is that it would, it would avoid this problem of, a, a concern of piecemeal encroachment of one, one lot at a time rezoning?
Well, no, so that what the SP would, so there's two paths. What the SP would do is give greater clarity on what's proposed for this specific property. The other step I'm going to take in addition to that is ask if there was any discussion with adjacent properties about buying land. If you look at this, ideally, what would happen, this is a planning comment, not a market comment, is you would have a unified development plan that protects all of the areas in blue, and you have managed access. That's, that's the ideal. But these are multiple private property owners, and so we, so we can at times say, we think you need to come in with a larger development proposal, but sometimes that can't happen, sometimes it does. So I'm going to ask the question, we're going to engage in that conversation, but we can't compel it or require it. And certainly, again, these are private owners and they have to make their own private decisions. But you, as a commission, can certainly say, looking at the policy, we think that this can be seen on its own as one property, and we now have more information as an SP. Or we think that if more land is needed and we can't get it, it's premature, and that's another reason for you to make a different decision. Is that?
Yep. Okay.
Great question, Commissioner. Any more discussion? Vice Chair?
Just, I guess, sort of building on that, I mean, the, one of the reasons that we would pursue that, and I don't think it's like the outcome, but the reason we would pursue that is so that we could do things like encourage connectivity, encourage, because right now, I mean, if, if these individual lots do continue to go down this path, everything is going to be emptying out on Old Hickory. There's going to be no connection between. And that obviously goes against our stated goals of, you know, some of those other development pattern goals. And, and there may be no avoiding that in this area, but it, it does seem worth some conversation about how that development pattern could build out. Well, I can make a motion.
Vice Chair, that would be wonderful.
I will make a motion that we defer this item for two meetings.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of two-meeting deferrals, say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it and is deferred to meetings. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming down. So this leads us to other business, item H. And so we've already done item number twenty-four. So Commissioner Smith's not here on historic, and Commissioner Henley, Parks update?
Yes, so really excited and also happy to present compliments from Parks Department, really complimentary of... really complimentary of the engagement of the Planning Department, especially as they gear up for the plan to play. And for those who don't know, that is Metro Davidson County's master plan for our parks and greenways and open spaces, which was largely the product of a 2016 engagement approved by the Parks Board in 2017. And so we all know how much our city has changed in that time. And so definitely time for a refresh. And so that's underway. And then we did have our Parks and Open Space Commission, which I also have the pleasure of serving on, had a great meeting, looking at all of the wonderful work that has been done around greenways. Cindy, who leads that group, highlighted all of the urban greenways that are slated. It is fantastic to see for Nashville to do that. I know a lot of those images are just renderings, but knowing the city well and knowing where those are located, I'm just really excited to be able to visit those spaces once they're completed. I think, again, Nashville continues to improve its public realm, especially as it meets its mixed-use opportunities along the corridor. And so just really excited with the work that's being done, the collaboration that's happening there. I know there's rooms for improvement, and there always is, but the work that's been done over the past few years that was highlighted at that meeting was really impressive.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Henley. Executive Committee report. I don't believe, Vice Chair and Commissioner Henley, I don't think we have anything other than make sure, we all, we have a deep bench on this commission. We have a lot of good people. And so we just need to make sure that we're all letting Kelly know that if we can attend the meetings or not. And so I have to do that as well. I know we're all very busy professionals, and so appreciate y'all doing that. Director's report, nothing? Nothing from the director. All right. Council Lady, your last, nothing. Seeing nothing? Is there a motion adjourned? Or adjourned?